Would you lead us in pledge tonight?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Gary, would you lead us in prayer? Gary, did you copy that?
Okay, now I copied it. I didn't hear you. So I'm, I'm leading in prayer.
Yes, you are, sir.
Okay, Father, we thank you for this day, for this time together. We thank you for the, thank you for healing, thank you for deliverance, thank you for your, your wisdom. And that is what we seek tonight to, to be a, a better representative of this town, the state, and this nation. Give us your divine wisdom and direction to lead and to guide and direct and to make decisions according to your will, plan, and purpose, in Jesus' name. Amen.
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 Nita, would you do roll call, please?
Counselor Johnson.
Here.
Counselor Foster.
Here.
Counselor Segola.
Here.
Counselor Locke.
Here.
Mayor Becker.
Here.
A quorum is declared.
Okay, do we have any modifications to the agenda?
No, sir, we do not.
Okay, approval of consent agenda for minutes of regular meeting, November 19th, review and approve accounts payable.
I would.
Oh, sorry, Larry.
That was Victor.
Oh, it was, sorry.
Victor and, Victor and Larry talking at the same time.
Oh, okay. Well, I moved to approve the consent agenda and accounts payable.
I would second that.
Been moved in and seconded to approve the consent agenda, minutes of the regular meeting, November 19th, and review and approval of accounts payable. Is there any more discussion? Yeah.
Counselor Foster.
Hi.
Counselor Locke.
Hi.
Counselor Segola.
Hi.
Counselor Johnson.
Hi.
Mayor Becker.
Hi.
Motion carries.
Okay, proclamations, communications, and appointments, we have none. So we go to citizen comments, special presentations. So Mr. Johnson, you're going to step out of your councilman chair and step into the public?
Amen.
You've got to change your background, man.
Yeah, I know, I know. I work on that. It was kind of a last minute thing. But yeah, inspiration I saw there on the agenda is probably a little strong, but I wanted to bring up a couple of, a couple of ideas that have, some you're familiar with. One is a galby name of Angela Harameel. She was at the council, oh, I don't know, it's a month ago, maybe more than that. Said that she had discovered a couple of things that got my attention. She'd discovered a problem in the town and a need of, seemed that, seems that the month prior to her coming in, there had been quite a few water shutoffs. And she, it was a couple of things that impressed me about her presentation. She, number one, saw a problem or a need. And then number two, wanted to see something done about it, and that's a sign of a good citizen. But number three was that she wanted to be the one to do that. And I just, she hasn't been back, but I did tell her to, to contact me if she wanted to pursue that a little further, because I was certainly in favor of it. She has, as of today, established her company as Montevista Community Emergency Fund. And has got that registered with the state. She'll have an account here pretty soon, and also a website, mcmvcfunding.org. Anyhow, I, I just wanted to bring that up. She's, what we all ought to be doing and what makes for a successful community. And she has done a phenomenal job getting that, getting that going. In any case, there was one other thing, and this is a little, a little bit off book, but I, I got this catalog in the mail that I get every year from World Vision. And I just got inspired, I guess maybe it's working with, with Angela, but the, it's a gift catalog for basically the usual necessary items. Let me make sure I got this, this right here. Alpacas, sheep, fruit trees, chickens, cattle. What World Vision does is, is gather this, all this information, how they do all this, what they do is they serve third world or emerging economies and countries. And I just decided, and I'm just going to pass this on quickly, it doesn't anything to do with, with council, I suppose, but it was definitely stirring to me, and I finally decided to do something about it. So I am going to present this to the rest of the town and get some support from the, the community, which I've started with my, what do I call it? My on hold, quote unquote, church is starting the whole thing with a hundred dollar donation. And what happens is, let me just explain this in a nutshell, with these, what this organization does is provide opportunities to basically, the, the major one that I'm talking about is basically an opportunity to feed an entire village and support an entire village in perpetuity. In other words, through agriculture, through livestock, through, and they present, where they raise money, and then they present these opportunities to somebody that actually makes their business out of it. In any case, it's a long story, and I'll get some more information about that, but I wanted to pass that on to those that might be watching on, on YouTube or Zoom, or however this, this whole thing works. So just wanted to get that out there. Those are the two positive elements, and then the rest of this is, is, is also positive, but has a little more direct relationship to the council. The, the council is a, is a unique situation. We are the only elected organization within the city. We are, our direct report is to the citizens, and it's the citizens to whom we have to answer. And everything else follows after that. But we had a situation at our last meeting where a vote was taken on a particular issue. It happened to be with waste management. It wasn't a huge deal, but it was settled and voted on. And it ended, it was declined, obviously, but what happened is, is that the discussion did not stop. And that's not part of how the city council runs its meetings. So in order to, the, the vote had already been taken, and that is the end of discussion, without a question, according to Robert's Rules of Orders, and obviously, we operate on a, a loose structure, obviously, of Robert's Rules of Order. But nonetheless, at the, at the end of the vote is the end of discussion. But as the discussion continued, and I was freezing my whatever off in this school bus like I was telling you about, that was only a side issue, but the, the discussion was inappropriate and continued on. In order to stop it, nobody else was saying anything, so I moved to reconsider. So at least that stopped the discussion so that we could get on. The only problem is, is that there really is not much of a reason to reconsider. I was also interested in more information, namely, from the competition, which I did my research on. That's, that was a part of a justification for wanting to buy some time. What I found out was with the competition, which of course is MDS here in our, I'm talking about Waste Management, and their competition is, is MDS, at least here in Montevista. I found that they had lower prices, they did provide recycling, they've had no price increase since coming to town in 2018, and have no price increase being considered for the future. So just wanted to put that out there. They also operate without contracts, as opposed to Waste Management, which is a, yeah, that's, there's certainly nothing unethical or illegal about that, operating with a contract, but it does put an additional bind or burden on the public, because in order to make a change, if they wanted to change to another service, they would have to, their contract stipulates they'd have to come up with the, the balance of their contract due. It could be several months of, of payment, just to get out of the contract. So obviously, that's, that's just a selling point for the other side, but the Waste Management request, and I wanted to make this clear, because it came out in the discussion, is not unreasonable. They looked up a chart, and they had a factor that they used for their suggested increase, and they applied that. It was a simple 3%. But somebody brought up in that meeting, just at our last meeting, that, that is not unreasonable. But the problem is, is that these are not reasonable times. We've got people out there that are struggling to hold their lives together. And if also, if the increase is so minimal, as expressed by the Waste Management representative, then they shouldn't even notice not getting it. If it's minimal for the clientele, then it's, it's also minimal for the provider. And since our direct report is to the citizens of this town, I still see no reason to implement it. And whatever happens, I did notice that it's on the agenda, and that's a decision that we have to make about that, but my motion was to reconsider. And that was only, there was only for one reason, and that was to stop the discussion, and after the vote had already been taken. So as far as I'm concerned, that vote stands. If the rule is that since it's on the agenda, then we have to vote on it and decline it again, that's okay. But quite honestly, it, just as a, as a matter of convenience, it probably shouldn't even be there. But nonetheless, that's not what I'm, I'm after. I just wanted to let you know that I did pursue what I said about gathering some more information, and I did pursue that. Got the information from the competition. That doesn't necessarily have anything to do with Waste Management's requests. But bottom line, the thing that means more to me than anything is that their request is not unreasonable, but these are without question not reasonable times. And so however that plays out for the rest of the evening is, is fine, I'll work with it. But I just wanted to make that clear to the, to the town and to the people that we answer to, which is the people of Montevista. And that's it.
Okay, thank you, Gary. All right, let me pull my. Bear with me, guys, I'm trying to find my, okay. Again, thank you, Gary, for your comments. All right, Nita, do we have any citizen comments out there?
I do not.
Okay, I seen there was a couple of people on. I'm taking it, it was Becca from the paper, and I seen two names. Is it?
Ellie Roberts was with Waste Management.
Okay. All right. One. Oh, wait, hang on. I lost my packet thing again. Had it open. Apologize. Um, so we go to public hearings, none, liquor license, liquor renewals, none, resolutions. Number one, resolution 2020-09, resolution, amending resolution 2020-07, and to adopt the annual mill levy. Final certification for the city of Montevista, Colorado, for the year beginning January 1, 2021, and ending December 31st, 2021. Nita, that's you, or you are forced, right?
Of Forest.
Forest?
Forest, you are muted.
Issue there. Got it. Okay, sorry, it took me like out of the meeting. Do you want to start over? Do you want to buy a cheeseburger? I don't know, sorry. So, still ask me if I'm only the meeting. No, okay, so, resolution number 2020-09. So every year, we get an estimated uh, valuation of the mills from the, what's that?
We lost you.
What's that?
We lost some of your volume. We couldn't hear you.
Okay.
Your audio is cut out, Forrest. You may want to turn off your video.
Well, that'll save everybody some trouble, won't it? Okay, is that better? Okay, so, um, every year, we get an estimate from the county that will reflect the final mill levy. And usually, it doesn't change much, but you can see this year, it went from 26,351,108 to 26,351,167. Woo hoo, yeah, huge change, but you're required to certify the final mill levy amount provided by the county. So that is why you have this resolution to memorialize the small differential there, so that the amount we certify for the state is 26,351,167. And that's what this is all about.
Tell me the numbers again, Forrest, 26?
Right, so if you look on the resolution, the initial, the original estimate was 26,351,108.
Okay.
The new number is 26,351,167.
Okay.
Am I hearing that right, Forrest? The effect there to the individual homeowner is almost nonexistent.
Well, right, and the valuation is probably based on the adjustment of a single property, I would guess, based on the, you know, forty nine dollars or whatever it is.
Okay. That was my, really, my only question. I, I didn't go through all the numbers, but yeah, that makes perfect.
It's really, only people that do crunch numbers for a living could appreciate that. But that does, it usually doesn't change, but for some reason this year, you know, maybe a property got reassessed. We had a lot of smaller additions to properties this year, so it could have been something like that, and a whole lot of like sheds and garages built, so might have fallen in there at the end of the year.
Motion to approve resolution number 2020-09, amending resolution 2020-07.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution 2020-09, resolution, amending resolution 2020-07. Is there any more discussion? Nita?
Counselor Locke.
I.
Counselor Segola.
Hi.
Counselor Johnson.
Hi.
Counselor Foster.
Hi.
Mayor Becker.
Hi.
Motion carries to approve resolution 2020-09.
Okay, we'll go to resolution 2020-10, resolution approving an amended budget and appropriations of funds for the calendar year of 2020 to authorize expenditures and revenues for the general fund and Conservation Trust Fund. Who's doing that one? Forrest?
That's me, Mayor. So, you know, Jenny's at a meeting, Aspen, she sends her regards, and also she apologizes for this, although she, I don't think she should. Basically, every year, at the end of the year, we're going to do budget amendments, that in this case, that has to do with unexpected revenue.
Lost you again, Forrest.
Personally, I prefer to do them in January. Okay, how about now?
We got you now.
Okay, so our preference is to do these in January, but the auditors really wanted us to do them now, so we had not planned on doing these till later, but six of one, half a dozen of another, I guess. But what these relate to, the change in the general fund is forty thousand dollars. You all might recall that the scouts made a generation, generous donation of forty thousand dollars to the Valley Theater. That was a pass through to the Valley Theater through the city, but it was a revenue, because it was an enterprise fund qualified donation. So that's why they wrote the check to the city, and then we wrote the check to the Valley Theater. So you can see that the adjustment in revenues for that, the general fund's 40K, and the estimated expense was 40K. So that memorializes that we received that check from the scouts, and then, you know, send it on, then we spent it. The other one, Conservation Trust Fund, you all, I'm pretty much ensure where that the Friends of Sky High asked the Rio Grande County Commissioners to donate a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of Conservation Trust Funds to the Sky High Project. Now, they agreed to do that, which was pretty splendid, but Conservation Trust Funds can only be spent out of a Conservation Trust Fund. So when the county wrote a check, they actually wrote it to the city, the city then deposited in the Conservation Trust Fund. There's your revenue of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and then we wrote a check towards the Sky High Project. That was expenditure of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So both of these are really pass-through transactions, which, you know, depends on your point of view, whether those actually have to be amended or not, but I guess we like to make the auditors happy. So that is the point of this, is just to memorialize that we have a revenue, an expenditure in the general fund of forty thousand dollars, and a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of Conservation Trust with an expenditure. And that's a large amount for Conservation Trust, you know, if you look at what was budgeted, it was a lot smaller. Usually, that goes to parks and those kind of things, but you can use it for things like Sky High, so that's really all this does, is memorialize this to make the auditors happy.
Wise move.
Yeah, probably.
Well, I just assumed you'd have them happy, if not. I move to approve resolution number 2020-10, as stated.
Second. Been moved and seconded to approve resolution 2020-10. Is there any more discussion? Nita?
Counselor Segola.
Hi.
Counselor Locke.
I.
Counselor Foster.
Hi.
Counselor Johnson.
Hi.
Mayor Becker.
Hi.
Motion carries to approve resolution 2020-10.
Very good. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
No ordinances, okay, contracts, agreement leases, Waste Management price increase, and it's Ellie. Welcome this evening.
Hello, can you all hear me?
Yes.
Great. Well, a long time no talk to, so thanks for having me on the agenda again. Um, I, I, it was great to actually hear from Councilman Johnson. I, I really appreciate you giving me some insight as to some of your concerns, so hopefully I can go through those with you tonight. Just to recap, so last time, last month, we came to the council with our annual price increase based on CPI was, which is from the Bureau of Labor and Statistics. It's a 3% increase based off the cost of inflation. And the things that go into inflation, especially for the Water, Sewer, and Trash Index, which is, you know, your utility index, are things like landfill increases that are gate rates that go up every year, as well as the cost of wages, the cost of transportation, all of the, all of the, you know, the, the small things that go into inflation are essentially calculated into that price increase. And I definitely hear you out that it is small, and I believe, you know, thank you for not thinking it's not reasonable, and I understand your concern during COVID times, but we are still operating, and that's what's so important. And I under, I understand your concern for your, your residents, and we have the same concern. That's why we have continued to be your frontline workers. We have not stopped, you know, servicing any of your areas. We are always timely in our pickup, and we're continuing to do so, but doing so because we're functioning as a business. And so we have to be able to provide for our employees, and God forbid anybody were to, you know, get COVID or anything along those lines out of that Holling District. You know, we, we would be able to supplement with a supplemental driver, because we are still operating, and that's important to remember that, you know, we are a business and we do have to operate as so. And, and a couple of caveats I'd just like to go through. I know the mayor asked me last time to come prepared with some numbers about just what we do giving in your area. So annually, we give over twenty five, it's almost twenty six, twenty six thousand dollars to just the Montevista community. And that's free services as well as donations to community events. So when you're talking about your residents, you know, we're walking the walk. I just want you to hear, we, we completely agree with you. That's why we're offering, all, we do all free services to your fire department, anything that they need. And we're also gladly share a thank you letter that we got with, from your fire department. So outside of the giving, there's some contractual stuff that I just like to go through, because I, I just want to clear up some of Councilman Johnson's concerns here, or, or maybe address some of them. So one of the things you said about our competition, and we're in no way, I mean, we don't want to go back and forth between Waste Management and MDS, because they're not even here tonight. But the, the difference is, of course, that we do have a contract with you all, and yes, they offer recycling, and residents can choose to use their service. So one of the most important aspects that I would like you all to remember tonight is that we do not have an exclusive contract with the city of Montevista. So you, you're, you all, your residents can exit at any point, they can, they can not choose Waste Management, and they can choose to go to MDS. You're choosing it, you know, a bulk majority of your residents are staying with Waste Management. And so by putting this increase forward, if for some reason that that resident could not pay that, that 3%, that 50 cents or something along those lines, they would be able to choose to go to MDS and, and. they would be able to choose to go to MDS and potentially, you know, get a different rate. I don't know what their rates are, I just know that they do have the option. So it is not something where you're locking every resident in at this rate. They do have choice in Montevista. So that, so that's a big item, and then I'd also like to point out, and I know your city attorney did this last time, and I know she's not on the call, but the other big difference. Councilman?
Mike Trahill is our city attorney.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm on here too.
Oh, okay. Hello, sorry. I thought Jenny was last time, so I'm sorry about that. Um, so what I, so what I was going to talk about is, I remember, so last, last time we had talked about the fact that there was a 4% franchise fee built in, and that's another big difference in MDS. So while you're saying that they operate outside of a contract, that is very true. But the reason that we have a contract with you all is because you require us to pay you all 4% of gross revenue. So, you know, by putting this increase forward, first of all, some of it's going to come back to you all. And that is why we have this contract, is because you all require us to pay you 4% to operate in your town. So outside of our 25, almost $26,000 in giving, there's also the franchise fees that you all receive from Waste Management for operating in the town. So I guess I'd like to just ask, is there any questions from some of the different items that I brought up tonight that are, you know, just to, I just want to clarify, those are the things that make us, you know, that's kind of different, is that your residents can leave the Waste Management contract at any time. And also that the reason that we have the contract in place is because we are required to give you all a 4% franchise fee to operate in the town.
So Mr. Reynolds?
Yes.
Did, you said that there's a contract, understand that, and from what you said, it sounds different than what I had heard, that there was, you're saying there's no penalty clause for leaving the contract? In other words, paying the balance of the contract before you can leave?
Not in the contract I have, and maybe that's something to double-check with your city attorney, but we are not penalizing your residents. So I'm not sure if that's a penalty that you have imposed, but our contract with you all is, there's no, there's no penalty.
Okay, that was, yeah, I understood that that was pretty clear. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I wanted to make sure that too, Gary, on your comment, because I looked it up, and it says that there's no, online, and they said there's no, if you, if I called them up and told them I didn't want to use them anymore, it's whatever trash they haul that time when they come to pick up, that's probably my last payment. And Ellie, you can let me know if I'm right, but it's not like I'm tied to you guys till the end of the year.
Nope, you're not tied to the end of the year. I think you're just tied to the next service that we have, you know. So just to fill out your billing cycle, of course, I don't think you'd want to pay for two monthly bills, so really, that's, that's it. And the town reports back to us how many people that they have, or how many that we need to pay for and stuff, so I mean, it's really, there's no penalty on our end.
Okay, Forrest, do you know what they're having to pay the franchise a 4%? What does that amount to?
It's about $27,000, Mayor. MDS has the same thing in their franchise agreement, it's 4%.
Okay.
Mayor, this is Mike Trahill. I did look at the contract, just so the council is aware. And any rate increase is subject to approval by the city, so it's a pretty clear-cut deal. They submit, and city can say yea or nay. So it's pretty straightforward.
I think the one caveat I would like to approach the council with, just because I think this is now my third year with Waste Management, approaching all about the increase, and just to give you a heads up, we've never had in, in all the different municipalities, we've never had anyone decline or kind of standard increase, and so ultimately, we would like to change this language moving forward. But one of the big things that we'd like to let you know, that if, you know, if we foresee this constantly being kind of something up in the air, there is a provision in the contract under the term which allows both parties, so the city and Waste Management, to revisit this contract annually. So I think that, you know, tonight, if we wouldn't be able to get to that 3%, just since it is a non-exclusive contract, and we do pay you to operate, that we would like to exercise that language under the term to revisit this contract.
Does any other council have questions for Ellie? Okay. I'm assuming that means no, nobody's got any other questions. Ellie explained it very well to you guys, full understanding. Okay, so based on that, we're going to need to have a motion?
Well, we don't need to, but it's certainly an option. Nita, you're muted.
I'm sorry, was someone going to say something?
Mayor Becker, the motion, or it canceled due to a lack of a motion.
All right, so I, can I just say that I think that due to the lack of the motion, that we would like to work with the city to probably exit our contract with Montevista based off the term? And so I will be reaching out, and we'll look at when that should be effective. It looks like the end of the term will be end of December.
So Ellie, what you're, and I just need to ask, and I know a lack of, I do know Robert Rules of Order, Gary, and I have a, I don't know how to go with this, but that amount of 54 cents, we figured it out, calculated it out, of how much that increase was. Where it is, and that contract has Waste Management paying us approximately, what was that, Forrest, $27,000? So let's take that right out of the budget. Waste Management will still be able to be here, if I'm correct. And Mike and Forrest, I need you to let me know. They can still be here and have their trash service, but with no contract, they have no regards to pay money, the 4%, am I right?
Well, yeah, Mayor, but they will have to have, will have to have some kind of agreement with them that's required for them to have a franchise agreement. I'm also not sure, and Mike can correct me, that Mrs. Reynolds can act as a legal representative of Waste Management, because I'm not sure that we agree with her interpretation that they can just drop the contract either. So we probably need further discussions with them, and the council can revisit that. I would be shocked if they just decide they're going to pull up.
We lost you. Lost most of that, Forrest.
And, you know.
I think we.
Sorry, counsel, okay, but, sorry. So a couple things. One, I'm not sure that that the representative that we have from Waste Management can make the statement she made to us tonight. I'm not sure that's the proper interpretation of the contract. Secondly, I just wonder if the council, if you really want to give up $27,000 of revenue, plus $26,000 of donated funds every year. I can guarantee you that, yes, MDS costs less money, but they hardly provide any donations, and they are behind significantly on their franchise fee. So, you know, I wouldn't hold them up as a shining star compared to Waste Management.
Well, here we are again, getting outside the council for our discussion. Every motion, every project, every process that I have presented has pretty much been voted down for one particular reason. And I heard this over and over again. It's the perception, not the actual facts, but the perception. Counselor Johnson, you're, you want to change the water rates just slightly, that won't affect anybody. No, the perception is going to be that that's a bad thing. And we had, you know, we talked about RV parking. The perception is going to be that with Sky High being built, that we shouldn't be pursuing anything else. The perception here, as far as I'm concerned, is a price increase during some of the most torrid times that this city has been through. I personally don't happen to agree with the reasoning behind it. This is not a small business storefront-generated virus. So lockdowns and whatever, or, you know, coming from churches or whatever. It, I won't go into all that, but nonetheless, while everybody is dealing with sucking it up, so to speak, to have the council approve a rate increase, which apparently is, keeps being presented as something minimal, as far as I'm concerned, the same argument applies here. The perception is that we are not representing the people the way that we should be. And yeah, if, if there's giving involved, I don't particularly like being bribed or bullied about that either. If there's such a small increase, if this thing is hinging on, if it's really that important to Waste Management, then I'd say that their accounting is, is, is based on some, some pretty limited prospects. And if they, as well as we, can present the right perception to this community, then we've done the right people, we've done the right thing for the people to whom we have to answer.
I'll chime in with you, Counselor Johnson. Waste Management last quarter brought to the bottom line $390 million. That is $390 million after expenses, after salaries, after everything that is net profit. It's approximately 10%, which makes them a very profitable company. They are the most profitable company in their sub-industry of waste removal. I appreciate the things that they do for the city and things, but with a projection of a $1 billion in net profit, somehow I think that they could probably absorb this 3% price increase that, you know, of cost of materials. I know that it wouldn't show up on their balance sheet, and I can guarantee you that the people who get a bill that says, you know, your trash pickup just costs more would notice it.
Mayor, am I, am I allowed to respond to any of this, or would you like me to wait until comments, or?
Mike? Is this something that we need to take up outside of this meeting? Because it's quite obvious that we have counsel that thinks we're out of Robert Rules of Order, and we're kind of off chart on this thing, but we were also off chart on this thing with it being on the agenda, and it ended up being just comment, which is fine. But is that something we need to just let you take care of, Mike, and then we can re, this will come back up again?
Right, I think if there's no motion of any kind at this point, then it sort of is left where we left it last meeting. And certainly, I'm not of the opinion that Waste Management can just drop their contract and say, we're out of here. I think it goes until 2023, I believe. It is subject to terms that the parties can agree to every year, but if the parties don't agree to anything, I don't know that that necessarily means you just get out of the contract. But, you know, it may be that at this point, if Waste Management wants to take a look at maybe trying to do something on their contract, I guess we can then take a harder look at it and decide whether we think they can get out or not. You know, it
And Mike, can I just?
And maybe.
Clarifying the, the language is in our term. Does say that, oh, I'm sorry.
Please let Mr. Trahill finish.
But yeah, I, I think it, it may be one of these things that you just maybe down the road, if the request is reasonable, maybe you take a different look at it when things get a little bit better here. I don't know. That's another option for the council, but basically, I am not of the opinion you can just get out of this contract. At least it doesn't look like that to me. But it may be that at this point, the best move is to just say, well, let's see what Waste Management wants to do. Then we'll take a look at it and decide what we think we can do, and, and go from there.
Okay, well, based on the fact that the motion failed for a lack of the the contract failed for a lack of emotion, sorry about that. I'm working on Robert Rules of Order, by the way, Gary. I would like for Ellie and Mike to get in touch with each other, and that way we won't continue this meeting on past this. So if you don't mind, Mike, would you reach out to Ellie, or Ellie, reach out to Mike?
Sure, be glad to do that. If, I'll probably get, I'll just get with Forrest to get that information and get back with you. That works, Ellie.
Let me just add one comment that, based on these later remarks about canceling the contract and, and, and unspoken threat to to make the prices even higher on a new contract, that just sends me further into the perception area that I do not want to, you know, there's no way I would approve this whole idea simply because of the perception, and now because of the bullying into some thinly veiled threats. Anyhow, just wanted to get that said, and I think we've said enough about this whole thing. We voted it down once, we've tried again, and it's voted down again. I, I think it's a dead deal.
Mayor, am I allowed to respond yet?
Ellie, let's, why don't you plan on getting ahold of, we'll get ahold of Forrest and Mr. Trahill, city attorneys, so we can just work that off of there, because we will continue on, and it's we'll just let it work that way, so we're doing it off of this meeting.
I understand. I would just like to respond the fact that we are in no way trying to bully you, or say that we would raise the rates past that 3% at all. So I just want, I want to clear that, clarify, that is not what this conversation is about at all. It's about maybe some contract changes.
Okay, so we'll let that. Thank you, Ellie, for being here this evening, and let's just, we'll leave that to Mr. Trahill and Forrest and you to have a conversation on that. Mike and Forrest, you good with that?
Good, good.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, definitely.
Okay, it looks like we go to staff proposals, reports, and actions, and we have a Okay, it looks like we go to staff proposals, reports, and actions, and we have a city manager report.
Okay, good evening again. A couple of things. So some are simple, one's good. Christmas tree lighting this Saturday evening. By thirty PM, Full Winder Park. That'd be fun. The tree's got a new theme this year that goes along with the theme for the parade and everything. Public Works would be fun. The other big news is that we did get the contract from DOLA for Sky High. So right now, we're waiting to see what the friends of Sky High can wear days, so that we can try to get in the final contract for the project. So we'll just have to wait and see on that. Hopefully, we'll know.
We're losing you again, Forrest.
And that's
What, Forrest?
I don't know, maybe I'm so far away that it's not working well.
Yeah, you, you sound like you're talking to a can with a bunch of rubber bands in it.
Oh, it's because I'm in Denver, sorry. Gary's in Hawaii, which is cool.
Forrest, before we lose you again, what was the time on the tree lighting?
Anyway, five thirty PM.
Okay.
Five thirty?
Yeah.
So I don't have anything outside of what I have on paper, so. Maybe we'll leave it at that tonight.
Okay. Thank you, Forrest.
Welcome.
I'm trying to get to the top of my deal again. I apologize. Okay, um, council committee, city commission, and council reports. Martha, we'll start with you this evening.
Hey, well, the Chamber of Commerce put out on Thanksgiving evening and right in time for Black Friday, a really fantastic holiday bizarre. The holiday bizarre, of course, had had to be canceled. They were being asked by vendors. I'm sure you all understand that professional vendors have been hurt very badly this year because events is where they go to sell their wares and do their things, and there haven't been any for them to do that. So the chamber did put out a very nice holiday bizarre. I invite you all to go and see that and support some of our local businesses. We actually had businesses from New Mexico, we had some from Colorado Springs. That's, I was very impressed with that, that our, that when the chamber started putting this out, that they were gonna do that, they were able to reach people, not just in our town, but far away too. This will probably be done again unless by some miracle, twenty twenty-one, we wake up and everything's back right again, and this is all a bad dream. But we'll probably be doing that again for sometime in early spring, maybe around the time that we would normally have Crane Festival. So this is a way that you can still support your local businesses. It's a way that you, and I'll just tell you, the stories, S L Voices did it, did the work, and the stories that we heard from these vendors were heartbroken. They need your help. I'll just be very honest about that. So please go, and if, you know, there's so much there that if you don't know what to get somebody, get them a gift certificate. Most of these businesses will give gift certificates. So I appreciate if you would support the chambers' efforts and support the businesses as well. Tell your friends about that. And other than that, I hope everything, everyone had a, a good Thanksgiving and a good week since then. And that's all I've got.
We're good. Thank you, Martha. Larry, would you like to go?
Sure, I'll jump in there. Just wanted to put in a quick announcement that on Christmas Eve, we will have two services featuring my friend Sammy here and a couple of his friends. So if you've got some family, children of young and old can come by and be entertained. On Christmas Eve, we will be doing free tickets so that we can be socially distancing responsible. But come on by and join us for Christmas Eve on a really fun service.
All right, thank you, Larry. Victor? Larry, I really can't. If you had a Santa hat on, I couldn't tell you apart.
That was cold.
That was good.
He has more hair than I do, actually.
Sorry, I couldn't help myself.
I really don't have a whole lot. I do just want to try to remind everybody who's listening and anybody who eventually will listen to the, to the feed to bring in your dogs at night, or put something warm for your dogs to sleep in during the nighttime. It is super cold out there. I just think of myself, when I go outside, if I'm cold, they're probably cold, you know, and I just, I see dogs out there shaking, you know, and I'm like, man, you know, like, I wish I could just shelter all these dogs and just give them all back and, you know, in the morning or whatever, but I just kind of feel bad for them. So just to kind of remind everybody, you know, try to keep your animals warm, try they, they, they have, they're, what do you call it, warm-blooded, so, all right. Don't have anything.
All right, thank you, Victor. Gary?
Yeah. Just a couple of things, since Victor mentioned that, Chief, if you're listening, you can pass, pass it on to the the CEO on, just, this keeps coming up. I shouldn't be bringing it up now. I don't think it matters, but I just keep forgetting about it. But that Forth and Dennis is a, is a dog that's always out, and no matter what the weather, and I don't know if they're, they may not be violating anything at all, I think, but it's like Victor says, it's just a humanitarian thing, if nothing else. Other than that, I wanted to pass on, I don't think we've mentioned this, our, one of our favorite organizations, DCI Downtown Colorado Incorporated, passed out awards this last, it's, it's been almost a month now, I guess. And different categories. And I read through that, I'm looking for any, you know, and I did see some recognizable towns that I was aware of, mostly the bigger ones. But they had two categories, the Big Town Award and the Small Town Award. Turns out, the Small Town Award for Down Town Improvement Plan went to Alamosa, Colorado. And I sent a note of congratulations over there, but I, I mean, it, whether you like what DCI does or not, I have some issues with it myself. My goodness, that's a, that's a statewide competition for, in different categories, of course, but in each category, it is entirely statewide. I can't remember what the bigger city was. It was Boulder or something like that, but I was impressed that our, our sisti, sister and our sister city and neighbor town of Alamosa won that award, so congratulations to them. Other than that, trust y'all had a wonderful Thanksgiving. I had the entire family together on, wasn't on Zoom, it was on Google, which, by the way, is much better. Not a fan of Google, but man, that was, it was so much different because everybody could talk, and it was, it was like, almost like being together. And beyond that, have a marvelous Christmas and New Year's, everybody. We're, I guess, we're doing a special meeting here coming up. I don't know if that's gonna be on, on Zoom, I suppose. Is that right, Dale?
That one, Gary, will be on December fifteenth at Council Chambers.
At the chambers?
Yeah, we will be at that'll be a in-person meeting.
Okay, so we'll see y'all, but not the rest of the town, and everybody have a great and safe holiday and New Year's, and it's gonna be, it's gonna be good. I'm saying that by faith.
So Dale, if I can just interrupt for just a real brief second before you go, I just had something come up that I remembered when Gary was talking. For the chief, I guess, there has been a van sitting on Second Avenue right by the school and the alley with a tow strap underneath it for about two months. It's been sitting there, and I think about, I, I honestly, I seen it, but I don't know if they, if they finally put a for sale sign or something on it. I just don't think they can move it. There's a tow strap underneath it. Like I said, it's been there for like, gee, a month or two, probably. And I just, just wanted to bring that to somebody's attention. So anyways, I hope everybody has a
Victor, second in where?
Right next to the school, the alley, right at Bill Metz. Yeah, it's like right next to the alley. It's like parked right on the side of the road. It looks like, you know, somebody just goes over there and parks almost every day, but the window is down, and there's a tow strap underneath it. So anyways, just.
I'll send an email on it right now, and as well as the dog at Forth and Dennis.
Good on, thank you, Chief. That's good. Um, again, backup Forrest, tree lighting, five thirty Saturday at Full and Winder Park. We will have carolers there, so if you want to come and sing, we will be practicing. People need to practice social distancing, so that's will be needed. So maybe we can cover the whole park. It's six foot apart. That would be awesome. And then the following Saturday or not, the December nineteenth, we will have the Parade of Lights from five thirty to eight thirty, and it's not gonna be a parade downtown. It's called a Parked Parade of Lights, so there's gonna be floats scattered all over town. And we actually, the Montavist Co-op is doing something, so we'll be stretched out from Chapman Park all the way to the Montavist Co-op. There'll be floats sitting on Main, Adam Street, wherever we can get them parked. That's what we're gonna do, and then people can just drive through and look at what we got here. And from my understanding, it sounds like it's a pretty big turnout.
To your lovely bride.
That'll be nice, because during the Parade of Lights, it's usually pretty cold outside, you know, so be kind of the opposite.
Definitely, Victor. So with that being said, excuse me, we will adjourn, no, we're gonna recess this meeting to December fifteenth at six PM, right, Nita?
Yes, Dale, that is correct.
Okay. So thank you all for being here. We're recessed till December fifteenth.
We'll see you guys. Have a good night.
Take care.
Yeah, Merry Christmas.